Good evening, everyone.
Recording in progress.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Worcester School Committee. And please stand if you can for the Pledge Allegiance. That's going to be followed by the National Anthem from Angela Gray, who was grade six last year at school at Nelson Place School. We'll do the National Anthem. Angela, thank you and congratulations on your last two months. You've been traveling, so congratulations on all your endeavors and good luck. We'll see you soon. Thank you. We'll do a roll call.
Member Alvarez?
Here.
Member Biancheria?
Here.
Member Bonenda?
Here.
Member Guardiola?
Here.
Vice Chair Johnson?
Here.
Member Mailman?
Here.
Member McCullough?
Here.
Member Roy?
Here.
Mayor Petty?
All right, here. We have, next up is the Consent Agenda. Member McCullough?
I'm just going to recuse myself.
For the record, recognize that Member McCullough has recused herself. Okay. So the motion is to approve the Consent Agenda. Roll call.
Member Alvarez?
Yes.
Member Biancheria?
Yes.
Member Bonenda?
Yes.
Member Guardiola?
Yes.
Vice Chair Johnson?
Yes.
Member Mailman?
Yes.
Member Roy?
Yes.
Mayor Petty?
Yes. Pursuant to action, taking an executive session, it is moved to ratify the sign of agreement between the Worcester School Committee and the Massachusetts Laborers District Council Four, and on behalf of the Worcester Public Service Employees Local Union 272 of the Laborers International Union of North America, AFL-CIO, custodians regarding a reclassification of certain schools at Group Five. Roll call.
Member Alvarez?
Yes.
Member Biancheria?
Yes.
Member Bonenda?
Yes.
Member Guardiola?
Yes.
Vice Chair Johnson?
Yes.
Member Mailman?
Yes.
Member McCullough?
Yes.
Member Roy?
Yes.
Mayor Petty?
Yes. Next up is held items. To approve the second meal, breakfast, lunch, snack, and adult meal prices for the 24-25 school year, recommendations to continue to hold this item. Roll call.
Member Alvarez?
Yes.
Member Biancheria?
Yes.
Member Bonenda?
Yes.
Member Guardiola?
Yes.
Vice Chair Johnson? Member Mailman?
Yes.
Member McCullough?
Yes.
Member Roy?
Yes.
Mayor Petty?
Yes. Okay, we are, uh... Member Johnson? Here you go.
All right, so we're moving on to recognitions. To recognize the students from Jesse Beckett Little League who made it to the 2024 12U Little League Softball New England Regional Tournament semifinals. Member McCullough?
Thank you, and thank you to the players and coaches and families who are here tonight. While the original recognition did list the Worcester Public Schools players, we have all of the players here tonight in order to honor them and really want to congratulate all of you. It was certainly very exciting to watch you this summer. I know I'm probably not the only one that signed up for ESPN Plus to watch your games or maybe attended a watch party at Scruffy Murphy's, and it was just so exciting and it was great to see you night after night out there giving it your all and really representing Worcester and those of you in the Worcester Public Schools representing us as the Worcester Public Schools. So just congratulations and just, you know, keep working hard and look forward to seeing you many continue on and whatever else that you may do, but thank you for representing us so well. Congratulations.
All set? All right, so we have certificates here. Congratulations. It was actually fun to watch you. I actually ordered ESPN Plus as well, so... So we have some certificates here, and on the certificate it says Certificate of Recognition Presented to Jocelyn Baumann for an incredible season and placing third at the 2024 12U Little League Softball New England Regional Tournament semifinals, signed by Mayor Joseph Petty, Superintendent Rachel Monares, and the Worcester School Committee. Congratulations. Leah Becker. Buchiko. Jalen Buchiko. Not here. Sophia Carrero. Sophia DeAndrea. Sophia Daval. Davali? Daval? All right. Maya Dominic. Amia Feebles. Annie Friend. Sophia Rogers. Chloe Sergi. Madison Smith. And congratulations to the coaches. So we have one for the coaches as well. Coach Karen Smith. Coach Louis Feebles. And Coach Rob Baumann. All right, we're going to stay right there. We're going to take a group picture. I hope I don't... Coach is up. Oh, hang on, get in there.
Congratulations. Now do all you guys spell your names. Sophia's. They all spelled the same?
Who's Miss DeAndrea? Where's your father?
Too busy tonight.
You want him out to City Council? Congratulations, everyone. Great job. See you next year. You all move up next year?
They won like state championships in like four years in a row, the same group.
Okay. We have public comment. Any member of the public may address the committee regarding any item before them for two minutes. Those speaking will state their name, their residence, and the item number.
Thank you. Fred Nathan, Worcester. So the item about the elimination of the MCAS. The way things are going everywhere, the students are being dumbed down, and I don't think that is right. The teachers make money and they're there to make sure that the students learn. This school committee is here to make sure the students learn, and anything else would be a disservice, and if you're not going to make sure that the kids have the intelligence and the way we solve it to get through life, then I want your resignation tonight if you're not, if you're not going to do that. Second item, about the safety in the schools, in the safety everywhere. I mean, I just want to remind you all, the cars go faster. I know you want to get the speed limit down to 25, but that ain't going to happen overnight if it ever happens. Cars go faster. Bikes, motorcycles go faster. Trucks are out there. I think you've got to start making sure the kindergarten is, make sure if they're going to cross the street, I would hope that parents wouldn't let them, but unfortunately, stuff happens. Make sure that they know where to cross and when to cross. Do we have to have more kids hurt or killed? I don't think the school committee would ever want that, so we've got to make sure. I mean, there are plenty of adults that seem to cross wherever willy-nilly they want to cross. I'm surprised there aren't more accidents. I've been on a bus, the RTA bus, and they'll have to stop fast because somebody's crossing the street when the bus is going 30 miles an hour and there's like about that much room. News flash, I don't know how much time it takes for a bus to stop, but let's do our jobs here and make sure the kids know how to cross the street. And just curious, because I don't know the answer to this. So the flashing lights that are in front of schools, are they in front of every single school in Worcester? Does anyone know the answer to that?
No, you can complete your comments. Go ahead.
So if those flashing lights are not in front of every school, they should be. I have, I try to use the flashing lights if I'm going to cross in front of a school.
Can you wrap up your comments?
Of course, Mr. Mayor. I don't want to, I don't want to go overboard here, but I just want people to remind themselves safety, it doesn't just start with the kids, it starts with you. Every one of you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Don't forget.
These are names, your residence, and item number, topic.
Hi, Monica Corzep, St. Dennis. I live in Worcester, obviously. The item number is, I don't know how to read these things.
Well, the topic is going on.
The speeding thing.
Okay.
I understand that people are not going to follow speeding laws. I'm guilty of it myself. I see 35, I'll do 40. I see 65 on the highway, I'm doing 75 because this is unwritten rule Massachusetts where you can go 10 miles over it. But when it comes to the school issue, that I obey. And I actually realized since the beginning of school, my son started at Sullivan, and he's a pickup walk, so I have to go to the school to pick him up. And I park on the side, I park on Apricot Street, right on the side. And in the last week and, what, today's Thursday, so in the last week and three days that school started, I've seen people flying down Apricot. I mean, there's no way that they're doing the posted 30 miles an hour if that's what it is on Apricot. Even if we moved the signs to 25, I can almost guarantee people are still going to fly because they're already, they're already disobeying Apricot, but they are flying, and these kids are walking down the street. Some of them are crossing to get on the other side. There's not even a crosswalk in front of the student parent pickup at Sullivan. It's just a crosswalk across the driveway. There's not one or two going across the street for parents like myself who are waiting to pick up our children. And these people are flying up and down Apricot Street. So in regards to posting the speed limit, bringing it down in the school zones, I totally wholeheartedly agree with that, bring it down. But considering the fact that we're human, people are not going to actually follow it because they're not following it now, maybe something about putting like a camera. I know that Kelly Square has like cameras on the lights to get license plates for whatever the case may be, maybe posting something like that in the area so if somebody does go over the limit, their license plate can get, you know, pictured and they can get a ticket for that because the way they're flying down Apricot, somebody's going to get killed. And I really don't want, when, when my kid's coming up the street, up the driveway, I literally get out of my car and I stand in the middle of the road to make sure that he doesn't get killed or any other kids are crossing getting killed because they are flying down Apricot.
What time of day is that?
His, his school gets out at 3:07, so I'm usually there at 2 o'clock just because I want to make sure that he can see me that I'm nearby so he doesn't have to walk halfway down the road or we get stuck in the driveway traffic because it's so many cars do pickup. But it's a lot. It's, it's, something needs to be done with the speeding.
Okay, thank you. Much appreciated.
Hi, my name is Deborah Martin and I live in Worcester. I'm also here to speak about GB 483, about teaching kids how to cross the street. I just wanted to say that I think the crossing guards for the young kids do a great job of teaching them how to cross and showing them what's safe and what's not safe. I suggest that a better use of the school committee's time would be to ask the city to better enforce and lower the speed limit. I also think that we need better design and access to the schools. The new Doherty is a good case in point. Right now, I know because of construction, there aren't a lot of crosswalks marked, but all the schools, as somebody mentioned, need crosswalk markings. When they built the new Doherty, they kept the old stone wall, which is lovely. There are now stairs to nowhere. There's a wall with stairs and no sidewalk to the school. Anybody who spends any time as a pedestrian knows that walkers take the most direct route. So we need to consider where kids are coming from. Germaine, Westland, and Havland, all are places that kids walk down. There's a path that goes to grass, so I'm just suggesting that we need to do better design, and somebody should probably put a sidewalk there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Kirsten Fraser, and I am now indeed a resident of Worcester. So I am here to speak in favor of the Yes on Two Resolution. I am a public school teacher. I work at North High and I teach multilingual students. My students, and I've said this in a number of places, my students are very intelligent. The one thing that they don't have is a super good command of the English language. The problem with the MCAS is it is designed for native speakers and it is actually designed at a level to challenge, to basically cut those out who are socio-economically challenged, who are challenged by anxiety or for whatever reason might make it difficult for them to take this test, and it definitely discriminates against students like mine who have a lot of intelligence, have a lot of skills, but are not tested in a language that they are comfortable with. So if we get rid of the MCAS as a graduation requirement, we're not getting rid of the MCAS altogether. It will still be there as a benchmark, but it will not be the one thing that will tell a student who has come to this country looking to make their life better and who want to be contributing to the society, to want to be productive citizens, that they can't get a high school diploma because they can't take a test in English. It's ridiculous to expect it. We've got to find better ways to show the skills and the abilities that our students have, and the MCAS ain't it. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, and for people on the traffic, Tuesday night, the council will be voting on the 25 miles an hour if you're interested in coming down and testifying. We will be there, and I know the police have been out there. I've seen them in front of schools handing out tickets in the past week, so the police have been out in the neighborhoods, so I do appreciate their effort over the last couple weeks. I'm sorry, I thought we were done. Okay.
Good evening. But yeah, no, it's... I'm Ruth Rodriguez-Fay and a retired teacher. I thought I'd tell them, I didn't. I would love to share with you the history behind the racist, eugenic MCAS. I served on the Harvard School to Prison Pipeline and shared the panel with the Suffolk County Juvenile Court Judge who testified that since the MCAS became a high school requirement, he witnessed a rise of youth in his court over 200%, mostly black and Latino, and over 95% of them have failed the test. That is, but you need to understand behind why we're here. You know, Alex, the American Legislative Exchange Council, they're the lobbyists in Washington that write all the law to benefit corporations. They're the ones that went to the legislature and demanded that they want to take over because they know that they can take money away from public education or corporations. The test is used to declare a district under slavery citizenship to give it to the corporate child movement. That is all that this is, this test is about. I also served under former Governor Patrick, who asked educators all over Massachusetts to help in develop measurement so we can get rid of the MCAS. And we did, we spent almost a whole year presenting him with real measurement, only to result. In fact, Paul Reba took me aside, he said, Ruth, I know you're fighting, but the MCAS is here to stay. I said, so what was the, why did you ask us to? Oh, because the corporate people are paying our legislature to keep it. This is all that it's about. And I'm going to end with this because I want you to read about how we got here. And also, it's an insult to the teaching professor because they have to spend a whole year teaching to a prisoner.
Thank you. Can you wrap up?
Finally, let me just say this. I had a young man come to my house to put my, from his special, and I asked him, oh, how was school? He said that in all 12 years that he went to school here in Worcester, the only thing he learned was how to pass the test. They gave him a diploma because he passed the test, and then he said, well, missy, I can't even write a simple essay.
Thank you. Hannah Weinstein, resident of Worcester, also an educator in the Educational Association of Worcester. Thank you to Ruth, who has been fighting tirelessly for decades to try to stop what is the degradation of our education system because of these standardized tests. I don't have to remind the folks in this room that there was a question on this MCAS test not even a decade ago, asking students to defend slavery in an essay on the test. And, you know, beside the, the points that my colleague made about multilingual education, let's really talk about the 700 students who have done all of the work of graduating high school, passed their classes with integrity, and are being told that they can't pass high school because of a test. A test that was designed, as Ruth mentioned, with the history in mind that these standardized tests were created based on eugenics, that this is not something that makes our education system great, right? What makes Massachusetts amazing, what makes our schools so great, is that we teach students to think critically, that we teach them to think beyond a text, that we ask them to do critical problem-solving skills, things that a test are not serving our students to prepare them for. And the limits to our larger education that could be devoted to the arts, to the things that we know help people and human beings grow, that motivate students and excite them to be at school, is falling second and third and fourth to a standardized test that we are focusing on, that has now all of a sudden moved to technology that is, again, another hindrance, not something that is accessible to every student, not something that is natural or easy for every student to use, right? These are stronger indicators of how students will perform, how many books their parents have at home, how much their parents make, if they have a computer at home, right? This is not a valid indicator. This is not data that gives us meaningful information, and especially that we brought our students in in the middle of COVID to take this test and then a year later changed and higher, created these higher standards for passing a test when we didn't even have valid data to measure it against. We know this is bad science. We know this is bad data. We know this is bad education, and I urge you all to be on the right side of this. Support your educators, support the people who are on the ground floor, and let's make sure that MCAS is not punishing the students by making it no longer a graduation requirement. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, seeing nobody else, we close the, this part, and we'll go online. Kristy, Madam Cork? Who's putting that on? We have Nellie Medina?
Hello, everyone. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, my name is Nellie Medina. I live in Worcester. I'm calling for Resolution 483. The request that administration ensure that Worcester Public Schools provide vehicular and pedestrian safety education to students. The danger on, on the streets is primarily due to speeding, not the children's fault. Speeding vehicles often exceed 35 miles per hour pose a significant risk to the safety of children traveling to and from school. It's unfair to place the responsibility solely on children to protect themselves from such speeding vehicles. Every year around 100 children lose their lives in the U.S. while traveling to and from school. Four of the young people killed by cars in Worcester this year were school-aged students. As a parenting community leader, I advocate for a comprehensive safety plan, reducing speeds to 20 miles an hour in school zones, assigning a crossing guard at every busy intersection, and arranging for police routes to include designated crosswalks such as Webster Square, Park Ave, Burnco Street, and other streets where students cross on their way to school. The school committee members should join citywide efforts to lower the speed limit, not place the responsibility on students or schools. Kathy Roy. The second one is the resolution calling for the passage of MCAS. I want to thank Ruth Rodriguez-Fay for her tireless advocacy throughout the decades and everyone else here speaking on behalf of this item. So more than 50,000 students have reached senior year without passing all the necessary MCAS tests since its inception. It's highlighting the barriers these tests create. As a parent and education activist, I advocate for assessment tools that address racial and economic inequality. I'm advocating for assessment tools that address racial and social inequality and have the potential to transform our education system positively. The MCAS does not accurately measure these students' overall achievement. It is designed and exacerbates cultural and resource-based disparities, unfairly impacting students' graduation and success. Considering these issues, I support Yes on Two and urge the school committee members to consider the concerns of the families and community I represent in my district and throughout the city, and vote for, vote for an opportunity to positively transform our education system rather than just relying solely on standardized tests like the MCAS that we know are created to be biased. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we'll close this part of the meeting. Next, we have a petition from the EAW of Worcester. Yes on Two Resolution, Elimination of the MCAS as a High School Graduation Requirement. Melissa, what's your name?
Good evening. I'm Melissa Verdiere. I'm a resident of Worcester, and I'm the president of the Educational Association of Worcester. Thank you Mayor Petty and Dr. Monares and school funding members for allowing me to speak tonight. I brought forth a resolution, and there are several points to this resolution. I'm going to... I'm going to highlight a few. So we're looking at question two and a vote yes on question two. So the resolution states, whereas the goal of public education is to teach students essential foundational skills such as reading, writing, and arithmetic, and to develop critical thinkers, engaged citizens, and lifelong learners; whereas the bedrock of the Commonwealth's world-class public education system is strong statewide standards that are uniform throughout our public schools; and whereas the most effective measure of whether students are meeting our strong statewide standards in developing skills they need to succeed in college and the workforce and beyond are educator-led assessments such as projects and papers and tests and group activities that are conducted throughout the school year. Whereas the MCAS use, I'm sorry, the punitive use of MCAS as a high school graduation requirement has restricted curriculum and shifted the focus of education in our public schools toward meeting a test score instead of fostering an environment of creativity, critical thinking, and real teaching and learning that helps students realize their full potential; whereas pediatricians, researchers, and school counselors have warned of the severe impact of high-stakes testing, like the MCAS graduation requirement, on students' mental health, well-being. And therefore, let it be resolved that the school committee of the Worcester Public Schools supports passage of question two to replace the MCAS graduation requirement and require instead the districts certify the students have satisfactorily completed coursework demonstrating mastery of skills and knowledge required by the Commonwealth's strong statewide standards in order to graduate. So I did bring some materials. If anybody is interested, I have them with me. But I wanted to say one thing on this. I was a 20-plus-year special educator in Worcester and I recently was watching TV and I saw these two commercials on vote no on question two. And one was a parent of a student who was on an IEP and the focus was on that we are eliminating standards. And the second was an educator who, I say supposedly because I'm not sure, a special educator, who also had the same sentiment about standards being reduced and as one of our members spoke earlier, kind of dumbing down education. I strongly disagree with that. The standards are not changing. The only thing that this yes on two would change is the graduation requirement. So as I said, I was a special educator for over 20 years and in that time, I worked with juniors and seniors quite a bit. So for a lot of kids, they take that test in 10th grade and they might pass it and be done with it. And so it's, you know, five days for them. Three days of English, two days of math, and that's it. But for a lot of kids, it's taking that test 10th grade, taking it two more times in 11th grade, and taking it two more times senior year. And so that's, add that up. That's 10 days of testing junior year, 10 days of testing senior year. And that's only looking at math and English. I also just want to make a point that I had a student years back and I can attest that in class, with support and without anxiety of test-taking, he did well. He could meet the standards. This young man graduated without a diploma and came back for five years. I had this kid come back for five years and take this test twice a year until he finally passed, and he did. And wonderful for him, but it was he wanted that diploma and he was not going to give up. So I think we really need to think about that. One other point I want to make is, in my time of teaching sophomores, many times, the kids would get their scores back and say, that's it. I'm going to drop out. I don't want kids to have that feeling. School has so much more to it than passing the MCAS. We teach these kids everything from how to tie their shoes to how to balance a checkbook. And I've done all of it. So I just really would appreciate you looking at this and really voting yes on this resolution. I think it's really important to think about, you know, our students and how these tests negatively affect them and how much money Pearson's making off us. Anyway, I digress.
Pearson was at the.
Pearson's the testing company.
Okay. Well, thank you and we talk about this and I'll just say, I thought we closed this part of the meeting.
Well, I didn't know I could speak, like, everything at first. So I just wanted to say something about the MCAS, that's all, I'm sorry.
Okay, we have motion to suspend the rules. Those in favor, opposed or wanted? Go ahead.
No, I'm going to be real, I'm going to keep it short. I'm sorry, I'm a mom, I'm not an educator, I'm not you specialty. I'm a mom, I'm a Worcester graduate, I'm a mom. My kids play baseball. But I can tell you one thing about the MCAS. I completely agree with everybody on taking it off as a high school requirement. I went to high school. We did have MCAS when I was in high school, but we didn't need it as a graduation requirement. And half my graduating class, I mean, majority of the ones that I still keep in touch to at this day, own businesses have become, one is a lawyer in Worcester. I'm a phobiatrist, so I don't work with numbers or anything like that. But I didn't need the MCAS to further along into my future, my career. What really bothers me is that we focus in more on math and English of these MCAS to require for graduation and we've completely taken out arithmetic, cursive writing. I have had young adults, 18, 19, 20 years old, coming into my job for drug screens and I ask them to sign their name and they have no clue what to do. They print their name when I'm supposed to be getting a signature. And I say, do you know how to sign your name? No, I never was taught that in school. But they can probably name off every aquatic calculation or whatever in math because of MCAS. But I know a lot of people whose kids had trouble graduating because they couldn't get past that MCAS score. And I agree with everybody that MCAS as a graduation requirement should be taken out because it doesn't make a difference. Later on in life, it doesn't really make a difference. Who cares if you know A plus B plus C equals 2, whatever the case may be? I don't need it so for work. And half the people I know don't need it for work. I don't understand why. They can still take the test like I did, but I didn't need it to graduate. I don't understand why it's needed for them, these kids, to get the high school diploma when they've worked so hard to get to where they are and then it's being taken away from them because of a stupid test. So I agree with everybody. I agree with you guys.
Well, thank you. And so we'll close this part of the meeting again and we'll go on. And I'm in support of the yes vote on this. And we've talked about this over the last, I believe, couple of years, about the positives and the negatives. And it's still going to be used as a tool, but not as a requirement, which I think is important. And we can work on something in the future, working with the teachers, the educators, and how we want to do this going forward. This is a good beginning. There's so much pressure on students and on teachers and on principals and to make sure kids pass the test, scholars pass the test. So I'll vote yes. I thought we did this last year, I could be wrong, but I thought we took a vote on this already. Do you scoop me, but you wouldn't mind doing it again?
This is not on the ballot.
It wasn't on the ballot before.
No, yes on two.
Okay. So this is on the ballot in November. So if people are interested, there's a vote yes on two, question two. So, Member Mailman, followed by, remember.
You know, before I got on the school committee, I probably would have thought differently about the graduation requirement. And, but then when I think about, you know, my work and the people that I've worked with that maybe haven't passed that MCAS but have gone into the trades and done a fantastic job. And I completely agree that this double language about eliminating standards and reduce standard is not what it's about. We're keeping the MCAS, it's staying in. Hopefully, we continue to perfect it. And there has been many variations of this test. It hasn't stayed the same. So I am absolutely in favor of voting yes on this and I hope that, I'm sure, our school committee will support that. And thank you for bringing it, putting it on the calendar.
Thank you. Member Guardiola.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I truly believe that the fact is that education is the best equalizer when it comes to access to equity. All of our students should have the availability to be successful. While I do believe that the current model is not perfect and hinders some students, especially our ESL students and new Americans that come to this country to live their American dream, without a plan or alternative to this model, I cannot support eliminating standards to gauge where our students are compared to their peers across the Commonwealth. I'm in support of new ideas. I'm in support of helping our students become the best they can be. But to eliminate something without a plan is not the answer. Let's come together and find a greater solution for this issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Member Alvarez.
Thank you, Member Mailman and Member Guardiola. I just wanted to add that, from what my experience with the MCAS, which I can speak on, is that I, all I remember is getting a score. I went through a lot in high school and the person that I sat next to, I was really good friends with. We talked a lot, very personal. She had a, excuse me. Her life, from what I heard and what I took in, I kind of wish I would go home with her some days, right? And she got a really high score on her MCAS and then she told me, she's like, oh, now I have a scholarship for college. And I'm like, I didn't know that. I didn't know you can earn a scholarship if you get a certain amount of points on this. If I would have had the supports, I feel like I could have also gotten a scholarship. And there's so many students that are just like me. And I just wanted to put that out there and make sure that we all are aware of that, right? And we are here for the kids and I just wish that it wasn't a requirement because new Americans, some of them are here for like, they're here for whatever. But when they first come in, they're coming in maybe at the beginning of the school year, maybe towards the end, and some of them during the MCAS period. How do we expect someone like that, who does not know English, does not know our school system, probably didn't even go to school because they couldn't afford it, now are here and they want to get an education. Now they're told, hey, by the way, you wanted that diploma, that's why you traveled over here. You can't get it because you can't even read in English. I don't think that's fair. And so that's why I want to support yes on no because I feel like it's important. Go ahead, but don't make it a requirement. They already have enough barriers in place and this is just another layer of it. Like, let's just make it easy for them. As in, holding them accountable, being there for them as supports and understanding that there's kids who are coming in to take this test from different areas, like not all of us had that luxury growing up with tutors, paid after-school program. Not every kid has that luxury. And you know what? I'm happy those kids that had that luxury. They got to, you know, use it. And I just hope that we're not creating that extra layer barrier for them.
Thank you. Okay, seeing nobody else, we will take a roll call vote. So yes would be in support and no would not be in support.
Member Alvarez. Yes. Member Biancaria.
A question. Okay, Member Biancaria.
This was a public petition to discuss this issue. I don't recall anywhere that we were supporting or not supporting this at this particular time.
I think in the petition at the end, it says to support, but I don't have it. I might read it today, but yes, if you want to hold it for the next week, we can take it to the next meeting, but.
I'd like to, then I would ask to hold the item. I think there has to be further discussion and reference to this.
I think we have the discussion now, though, if you want.
If you would like to have a discussion, but I don't see the pros and cons being brought forth. I see the cons. I don't see any pros. So I need to have some discussion as far as teachers being present, educators being present that feel as though the elimination of the MCAS may be of the benefit for not having to stop you from receiving your diploma. However, as it was mentioned this evening, there seems to be no other plan. It's to eliminate something. And before I would agree to eliminate something, I would like to then have more discussion. So I would ask that the item be held at this particular time.
We can take a roll call on that. You need six votes for the.
Can we suspend the rules?
No, not going to go back and forth, but. We'll come back after we take, if it's. So the motion, the motion is to hold. If you want to suspend the rules, I'll give you one minute just to say what we're.
So I'm.
Yeah, we're going to take the vote to hold right after this, okay?
Sorry?
There's going to be clarification, then we're going to take your motion to hold, okay?
So, hi, Melissa Verdiere, EAW president, Worcester resident. I just wanted to say that the first thing I said when I talked about the no on two commercials is that their report is that it is dumbing down standards. It is not. The standards aren't changing at all. The test isn't going away. The only thing that's being eliminated is the graduation requirement. So that is the only piece. So instead of being a 10th grader and passing it and moving on or being a 10th grader and not passing it, now I don't have to take it four more times before I graduate high school because I've lived this. I've been the teacher of resource room students that take this test four different times, junior and senior year. So, and I represent educators. So I just want to say, it's not eliminating standards at all. Period.
Thank you. Okay, so the motion is to hold, roll call.
Member Alvarez. No. Member Biancaria.
Yes.
Member Benanda.
Yes.
Member Guardiola.
Yes.
Member Vice Chair Johnson.
No.
Member Mailman.
No.
Member McCullough.
No.
Member Roy.
No.
Mayor Petty.
No. Let's vote.
Six to three.
Six to three, okay. Okay, so we'll take a roll call on this. The yes vote would be the, Member Benanda.
Yes, I just want to respond to the president of the EAW. Even though the standards are being held, it is as Camila Guardiola says, there is no plans in place as to how those standards will be assessed. I've been in education a very long time and before MCAS existed and after. And I can tell you that education got better because teachers were held to high standards and students had to meet those standards. So I would also be voting no, and I just wanted to say why. It's because the plan is not set on exactly how those standards will be assessed. Thank you.
No, thank you. Member Guardiola.
Thank you, just for clarification purpose. This is a ballot question. I don't know why we are voting on this because we have no power over Desi at this point or any of that, so that's all.
Okay, Member McCullough.
Thank you. And I know this has turned into probably a hotter topic than we anticipated tonight because we had discussed this with the previous committee, but I understand that there are new members on the committee. My understanding, and I'm sure somebody will correct me if I'm wrong, is that the standards are still in place. We're still using it as an assessment model. We're still using it to compare where our students are and to hold people to those high standards. At this time, there just would be no longer a graduation requirement. And I'm just going to share my experience as a parent that I fully support removing that graduation requirement for a child that has struggled with it repeatedly, who has met all of his benchmarks as a student, but MCAS has continued to be an obstacle for him and he struggles with that. And I know what it does to him on my personal level. So I will support this not only as a parent, but as a school community member.
Okay, so the member, so the motion of yes, vote with the support the resolution and no vote wouldn't. So roll call.
Member Alvarez. Yes. Member Biancaria. Member Benanda.
No.
Member Guardiola.
No.
Vice Chair Johnson.
Yes.
Member Mailman.
Yes.
Member McCullough.
Yes.
Member Roy.
Yes.
Mayor Petty.
Yes.
Seven to two.
Seven to two, okay. Okay, thank you, everyone.
Sorry, six to two, six to two.
Six to two.
Yes, sorry.
Okay. Okay. Now we're going on to the next report. Report the superintendent from here to anywhere. Together, welcome back, school year 24, 25. Okay, can't wait to see the stats for our budget for next year.
Well, good evening, everybody. Through the chair, welcome back to school. It is always an exciting time of the school year when this, when we start. Everyone starts fresh and then quickly they are reminded how difficult it is to be an educator in today's world and yet we keep doing it because we love children. So tonight, next slide, please. Thank you, Mr. Allen. School committee members will receive an overview of the. Thank you, Mr. Allen. Um, school committee members will receive an overview of the opening of the school year, what we refer to as the glows. Um, specifically talking about the transportation systems improvement. Um, gonna give a little shout out to our nutrition services as well. And then opportunities for systems improvement, um, we'll, we'll get a little bit of where we'd like to improve upon for next school year. You receive an update on district and safety enhancements, um, the vestibles at our schools, the I Love You Guys, uh, training that we had, a two-day training, and then an overview on what we're calling the operating agreement between the Worcester Police Department and Worcester Public Schools. Um, I'll explain why we've changed the language on that. And then an, um, update on the following data sets. So preliminary student enrollment, um, staffing, numbers, um... And it's, so it's kind of a hodgepodge a little bit, so if you'll just kinda bounce around with me, I'd appreciate that. So next slide, it's just our first day of school and we started out, um, at Nelson Place where we welcomed, um, many scholars to the school. You can see that people were very excited to be back. Um, the families were, um, so, uh, patient as we had, um, quite a bit of media there to welcome us back. Um, we also opened Darty that same day, and so you see a picture down in the left-hand corner of some of our high school scholars. Uh, we gave Darty an opportunity to get themselves settled before we brought in a, a lot of media. So it was a really great start of the school year. I really do wanna commend our educators, our school leaders, our support staff for truly the smoothest, smoothest start of a school year in my, um, thirty-one years of educating. And, you know, I mean, we serve over twenty-four thousand children. Our numbers are showing close to twenty-five thousand and five thousand employees, so, um, we will always have something going on. There's a lot of humans running around and a lot of energy and excitement, but it was a very, that being said, a very smooth start of the school year. And that is because of the dedication, perseverance, and the true love of the profession that our educators show, um, at our schools each and every day. So kudos to, again, our teachers, our support staff, our school leaders, um, and all the departments behind the scenes that make this happen. Next slides show some, um, images of the safety enhancements. So at the end of last school year, I gave you a snap, a little sneak peek of what this would look like at McGrath Elementary School. We have successfully, um, over the summer, our facilities department made sure that we had these safety enhancements in place at these four schools. This was the most, the to- the tippity-top priority that came out of our safety audit. And what this does is give, um, these schools that had a very kind of open concept where you can just walk right in and really just kind of have your way in a school if you wanted to, um, a layer of protection from the school considering, um, the world we live in now, or I guess the nation we live in and the tragedy that we've heard about yesterday. I was very grateful that we have this in place. So this is, um, an example of taking that safety audit that was, uh, conducted my first year as superintendent and putting it into action. The next slide, um, talks, gives some images of the I Love You Guys training that we, um, eh, we ran in collaboration with I Love You Guys, which is a national foundation. The mission of I Love You Guys is to restore and protect the joy of youth through educational programs and positive actions in collaboration with family schools, communities, organizations, and government entities. Um, the foundation is led and supported by survivors, family members, first responders, and community members with a vested interest in safety, preparedness, and reunification in schools. So two school years ago, we brought I Love You Guys in as an initial overview for our principals. And then last year, um, with Dr. Matt Morris, who is in our audience here, we really started to redo how we, um, conduct safety audits or safety monitoring at our schools. And we took two days during the summer with, um, all of our district leadership and made sure that everybody was trained. And day one was on the standard response protocol. And this provides consistent, clear, and shared language, which is the most important part in, when it comes to, um, an emergency. That shared language and actions among students, staff, and first responders for any hazard. Um, we tend to think that this is only for the tragedies like what happened in Georgia, but that's not the case. This is about making sure that schools know how to respond and our first responders use that same language. If there is something going on in the community, if there is, um, a student who got sick in the hallway and you don't want others to walk into that, we have common language now that our schools will use so that, um, you have, you know how to respond. Um, that common language is, it's based off of five actions. There is the hold, there's secure, there's lockdown, there's evacuate, and there's shelter. Most of what we would use would be hold, like a child who got sick in, um, in the hallway and you don't want other children coming out of the classroom and accidentally walking into what is on the hallway floor. You just put an announcement out to hold so that the custodian can get there, they can clean it up, and things move on. Um, secure would mean there's something going on out in the, uh, community and we don't want, um, our children out and, and, um, dealing with that. We don't know what it might be. It may be something as simple as there's a coyote running around, right? Those kind of things. Um, and so we secure, make sure no one goes out until we can make sure that the space is safe. You can hear that secure is very different than lockdown. In the past, we used to use lockdown for everything. And that would confuse, um, and create unnecessary, um, anxiety for our children and for our staff. So now our principals and all of our district staff, um, have these five actions. That was day one of the training. Day two is what you see the images of. Day two was, um, the reunification process. So, um, I had some people tell me yesterday after they saw, again, what happened in Georgia, um, how grateful they are that we are, we at least got to practice. What would this look like? God forbid, we had to, um, evacuate. First, we had to lock down, then we had to evacuate a whole school for whatever that reason might be. How would we reunify families and staff? Uh, families and children, and what would everybody do? So the I Love You Guys Foundation had us practice the simulation of this for a full day. And, um, and it was eye-opening for our staff members to think about all the, um, the different layers that need to be in place to calm families and to reassure them that we will connect them with their child and to do the same for children. So once you get to practice it, then you have a better understanding than when you see, um, things like what happened again in, um, Georgia. So we are grateful that we started this training. I want to, again, commend Dr. Morris for taking the lead on this. We have a plan to, so we have trained all of our principals. Some were not, they were gone for different reasons. We will be bringing people in and doing a second training of, of anyone who missed it and our assistant principals. And then we will have a plan for ongoing training, um, with this foundation. We did invite, and many of our, um, first responders in the community attended the two-day training with us. So it's not just a Worcester Public Schools, um, event, and, and again, the shared language is very important. We cannot always control for what, what can happen, but we can be prepared. And, um, and that is what the I Love You Guys training does, um, for us. And so we are moving along in that and I feel, um, much more confident in our ability to respond. Um, God forbid, there's any reason that we would want, that we would need to. The final next slide, um, as in terms of safety, and this is in reference to, um, some questions I think that member, uh, Biancaria had asked about, is the, our collaboration with the Worcester Police Department. Um, as you may know or may recall, um, last school year, my first two years here, we had an MOU, memorandum of understanding for our school liaison officers. Um, learned through that process that if you have any kind of formal partnership with the, with the police department in the state of Massachusetts, you must follow the model MOU that exists at the state level. But because this school year, um, the chief, the acting chief of police let me know last spring that they are understaffed and they're having trouble continuing to, um, bring, uh, sufficient recruits that, that the police department was not gonna be able to allocate the SLOs to our quadrants like we have in the past. So instead of having an MOU, we, because when we went through the MOU, most of it, we struck out because it didn't pertain anymore because we didn't have even SLOs assigned to us for this school year. So instead, we created what we're calling an operating agreement. It is in the agenda, um, for your review. It's not something that the school committee approves because it's not in the school committee approval, but it's just to let you know what this agreement does, um, or what our agreement is with the Worcester Police Department. It identifies their, uh, their lieutenant of operations for day as the point person on the Worcester Police Department side. It identifies our director of safety, Dr. Morris, and our administrative director for positive youth development, Mr. Tony, as our point people. Dr. Morris's, um, connection is more about the physical safety that might be happening around the schools or any kind of, um, hazard of some sort that he would be the connection there. Whereas, um, Mr. Tony is more about, um, student supports and any kind of connection we might need there. So they work in collaboration with the Worcester Police Department, um, and they are our liaisons. And then finally, what this operating agreement does is, um, we have talked to them about wanting to, you know, there's been a lot of conversation about, um, building relationships and seeing law enforcement as a viable career for our children, but also, um, seeing the police as, or law enforcement as, um, part of an overall picture of a safe community. And so we are going to bring back what was something that, that was in place previously. Um, it's being called the Scholar Engagement Program. It is something that we'll do in our sixth-grade classrooms through our health curriculum. It's two days, so it's twice. Um, and it's around drug and violence, um, aversion. The, um, and it'll be conducted by the, um, gang unit officers or, um, members of the gang unit. They will be in plain clothes, so they will not be coming, um, in their uniform. And we will allow families any kind of opt-out that they would, um, so desire. For some of our families, this is something that they may be interested in and we wanna provide that to them. So we're going to be working in collaboration with that on how we're gonna be able to do this. Um, maybe that we have more classrooms than they can handle in one school year, but, um, we're gonna pilot this and see how this goes. That is, um, in the operating agreement. So no MOU with our Worcester Police Department for this school year. Again, um, if there's something that happens at the schools that we, um, that are needed, they, our schools will call the, um, the emergency number or the non-emergency, depending on what it is. And the chief of police has told me that, uh, the route officers, or route, I think that's, that's the right term. Route, yes, um, will be available. So in many ways, it's not very different than what we had, um, because those same officer, they, they tend to have the same route. So I think we'll still be able to create those relationships and partnership, but they could not only give us, um, they, they could not afford to give us just SLOs for this school year. Um, the operating agreement really memorializes our collaboration for this school year. So that's where we are when it comes to safety enhancements. I'm gonna jump now to our enrollment. Um, as you know, the, um, the official enrollment for the school district is not until October first. So what we are providing for you, that Mr. Allen feels most comfortable with, um, is the, the overall, the kindergarten enrollment. Cuz those ones we know for sure are in our schools, right? So, um, we are trending higher than last school year, as you can see. Um, kinder and pre-K started August twenty-seventh. This, these numbers we polled, I'm gonna say, was it last, I think it was, uh, last Wednesday. Um, the kindergarten enrollment is the highest since pre-COVID levels. And again, our numbers will, um, be official October first. So what we did today, um, and as a cabinet team, is we polled the numbers at our schools and took a deeper dive into looking at class sizes because I am, um, wanna make sure that our classes aren't getting too high. We knew that we had to, um, redo some, some positions, some vacancies, or some positions last year because of the budget. And so we're monitoring that. And as of now, there's about ten schools that, um, a grade level or two were a little concerned about, and so we're gonna go deeper into having conversations with those principals, see if there's already... First of all, we need to make sure that just because the numbers on the books say a certain number, that there's actually bodies associated with that. Because sometimes, um, we have not removed students from the roster, although they have not shown up. So we've gotta confirm that. Um, I refer to it as a warm body count. So the executive directors will be working with their principals on that at these identified schools. We're gonna find out what the principals may already have in, um, place to help some of these larger class sizes. Um, and then from there, we're gonna look at it as a quadrant and see if there's any change that can happen. The final piece, and I've already, there's no promises being made by any means, um, but did reach out to the city manager and let him know enrollment's looking very high, which is really good for next year, but challenging for this year when we had to, uh, reduce staff. Um, and so I, we may, if, if there's free cash available and if it's not already allocated and if there's not another way that we can do a workaround, um, be asking for a little bit of money for, potentially to lower a few class sizes, especially as it relates to our kinder through third grade, very, um, wanna keep those lower. And then we know by looking at the data that I shared with the school committee this summer, um, the children who were in kinder and first grade during COVID, they are, you know, they're still feeling some of those ramifications. So looking at those grade levels as well. Um, and it could be something, may, may not be adding another teacher because there may not be a classroom available, right? There's all these different contingencies, um, but maybe it's about adding a paraprofessional or something to help offset. So more to come on that. We are taking a look at it. It's gonna take probably a few more weeks before we can finalize things. But the good news is, looks like numbers are up. Darty is very, very full. So, um, we're working on figuring that out. That's another challenge. Next slide are the sys- is the systems improvement. So you may recall last school year at this time, I, um, I made a, I guess, a bold statement, um, that I wanted to be able to have our routes to our families earlier than what we'd done in the past in terms of transportation. And so I asked Mr. Allen to take the lead on this and he worked with our transportation department and, um, and they did it. And we were able to get routes out to their, our families, um, on August first. We've never had it that early and with that, and we're fully staffed in transportation, so now that's another huge piece. Um, and what getting the routes out early allowed for, when I, um, saw our director of transportation, um, he said, you know what, now we're able to take care of some issues that we typically would have been taking care of the first week of school. So that means children are in school and, um, and less of the wasted time. It's not perfect. I've still received a few emails from parents, but it is less than it had been in the past. So that's a systems improvement that I'm very proud of the team for accomplishing. Another one that I just wanna put out verbally, um, because I was with a group of parents yesterday and this is not the first time that I've seen, I saw some on social media. Our nutrition services has made a dramatic shift in their menu, menu options. And, um, children are raving about it and parents are talking about it. So things like I heard yesterday, mac and cheese that I think had broccoli and something else in it. Um, what's the other ones? Did I hear stroganoff? Is that what we did? I don't remember. Chop suey, I mean, we've, we're, we're, we're changing things up. Um, we're keeping pizza on Fridays. That's a tradition. Don't wanna change pizza on Friday, um, and, but we, you know, and I'll just say, pizza on Friday, that's not just a tradition in Worcester like that was, I'm gonna say nationwide, cuz I, I remember that as a child, too. Um, but what the goal of nutrition services is, to have a rotation of different options. Um, that's a month's worth so that over a month's time, you get different things each day aside from Fridays. And then it would repeat again. So, um, really pleased with that. And there's a lot of, um, movement happening in the nutrition services, but when you, when you hear it from the families and the children, that's a big deal. So I wanna throw that out to our nutrition services, anyone who's listening tonight. Next slide are the systems improvements. So, um, we want to go deeper with, um, the enrollment and placement services. Last year, we did a really, we did an overhaul on our website and really made sure that the process for new enrollment for families was made more clear and got some good feedback on that. And yet this year, there was some snags we had, so it's not about how we communicated. It's something internally that we need to figure out. So we're gonna work on the systems, the structures, and the organization um, so that next year, our enrollment and placement will be smoother than it was this year. Um, we wanna improve efficiencies, communication, and accuracy in our systems work. And there's a lot of people involved in this, a lot of departments that we need to bring together. Um, I wanna thank Dr. Marie Morris, not Dr. Matt Morris. I want to thank Dr. Marie Morris, not Dr. Matt Morris, she's going to take the lead on this, because we need to bring IT to the table, we need to bring teaching and learning to the table, we need to bring family and community engagement. So there's a lot of different people. We want to improve our structures, placement, and assignment processes, so that families have a better idea. Want to apologize to the families at some of our schools who understand the Friday before school, were told, oh, you're going to go to a different school, we don't know exactly how that took place, we don't want that to happen again, so we need to fix that. And then, organizationally improve policies and procedures for the implementation. So, next school year, anticipate being able to share that we had an even smoother opening. Transportation moving nicely, food options, placement and services, and none of this has to do with the MCAS, right? So interesting, but yet, this is the work of a school district. Next slide, I think the final part is, that I'm going to go into, are some of the questions we've had around staffing. So this slide in particular, member Benenda, I believe that you had asked about this, and so we brought this back for you. Last year's retirements and resignations. So, on one side, you'll see 46 retirements as of the end of last school year, and 170 resignations. So you can see 216 in totality on that. Dr. Ku told me we're still receiving resignations, but that would have been for, they would be resigning right now for this school year. So that's where we are for the last school year. Next slide is our staffing, was really pleased to see this. So, we, because we've just keep trying to improve on our recruitment and our hiring of people, you can see that last school year, we started this school year with 97, 95.94% being staffed, and you can see this school year made a huge improvement, especially in our secondary, which is not easy to do, because you know you need specialized licenses for those settings, and yet, we have increased that. So we improved our staffing by 2.17%. That has huge implications, right? That means children get to start the school year, getting to know their classroom teacher. The teacher themselves have a, they're really set up for a much more successful start to the school year. It's really hard on a new teacher to come in even a week into the school year, and so we want to keep getting better at this. We still have some vacancies, but we have less vacancies than we did previously, and the vacancies tend to be in the areas that are harder to fill, so some of our special ed settings. And I think last I saw it was one ESL, that's specifically at our elementary. So that's our current staffing. Finally, the last slide is just a snapshot of our acquiring and retaining talent. So, we have hired 208 staff members. All of these people were, all of these positions were in the previous budget. Of those people that were hired, and you can see kind of the breakdown of that, 94 of those were people of color. And so, we continue to try to diversify our workforce across the board in all areas. You can see percentage-wise, that 45% of our new hires were self-identified, because they identify themselves as people of color, compared to last school year, where it was 28.17%. So I want to commend our human resources team for their diligence, and for putting more systems and structures with our principals, because, not sure if people know this, but our principals are the ones who do the hiring of the staff at their schools. And so, we need, we had to create ways by which we at least opened a pool, an opening for the diversification of our staff with our principals. And so, that is the work of our human resources engagement and equity team, that they've done that, and we can see that we have benefits from that. So, last slide is, you know, again, I want to welcome everybody back. I want to thank Principal Staley at Doherty Memorial High School and his team for such a smooth opening for a school that is such a large change. When you drive by, you still aren't quite sure if it's like, are their children in there? The day before school started, I walked up there to make sure, what's this going to look like when families come? And I could see, once you're up there, you can see it's very clear, but from the street, not so much. Appreciate the feedback from the community member, we'll be taking a look at that. But, overall, that school was a great opening for a large school. I stopped by after the Nelson Place, and the children, it's almost like you had to pinch them, like they kind of were just walking around, they couldn't believe it. And I'm going to say the staff as well. Many of them were just in awe in what they're, in what that is. So I am looking forward to what that school will provide for our scholars this year, looking forward to designing Burncoat High School in the future, and what we'll be able to do for our, for our children in Worcester Public Schools. So, thank you, Mayor Petty.
Thank you. Any questions? We can file the report. Member Millman?
Through the chair. On the new police agreement, who, did you say who the lead police officer was?
It's lieutenant.
Through the chair, I do not have the name. I don't know if Dr. Morris or Mr. Tony have the name. I know the position. Do we have the name?
Yeah.
Come, come for it.
Through the chair, there's two lieutenants that we work with, Lieutenant Lopez and Lieutenant Boslaw.
Okay, thank you. And those are your two contacts, your immediate contacts?
That's correct.
Okay.
Through the chair.
Can I also ask a question through the chair about the opioid, or the drug training, the drug? Is that specifically on opioids for the, what are we calling that?
The scholar engagement? Is that the one, the sixth grade?
Oh, that was it, okay, in sixth grade. Okay, so let, can I ask a broader question about our education for our kids on opioids, and what's happening in our community, and how we must prevent that, and don't take drugs? Like, can you just give me a high level where we're at with drug prevention? I know Dr. Castillo worries about that in our schools, and I worry about that in our schools, and we certainly have a sizable problem in our city, so I don't, what are we doing in our schools?
Madam Superintendent?
Through the chair, so it is through our health curriculum. I don't know exactly which grades, do you, Mr. Tony?
Through the chair, I don't know exact grades where that drug prevention curriculum is taught.
That's okay.
But I believe, well, I don't know for a fact.
I'll file an item, and we'll figure it out. Thank you. I guess it's, you know, it seems concerning in a way that we don't have the MOU anymore, but what you described, you know, we're hearing all throughout the city that we don't have the force, certainly the police department is trying to send that message, and, but it still seems like probably our, the people that were our liaisons are likely in the neighborhoods that they were in the last time, and so, the, we're just less formalization, maybe?
Through the chair, I, I think that's a good way to describe it, that there's less formalization. What that would mean, I think in the, in a daily operating piece, is that it could be, if we have some kind of emergency of some sort, that the route officer may not be the one that comes, someone else might come. Whereas before, we would get our SLO.
Always.
So there's that, that's, that's the difference, is we may not always get the same person. However, I will say, last school year, towards the end of the year, as the, the police department started really struggling with having enough people around, that was starting to happen anyway.
Okay, okay. And, and through the chair to the superintendent, do you feel like we have a strong relationship with our police department in this city?
Through the chair, absolutely. I can, I was just on the phone with our acting chief yesterday. We are very, we work with each other, we're collaborative. We're, we're still, he's relatively, as we all know, relatively new to the position. And with the change with the SLO, we had to talk about, okay, so what happens, for example, when something happens in the after-school hours, on the weekend, how do we communicate that? So he and I agreed that he would let me know what's going on, so then we can prepare our schools, because when, you know, something happens on the weekend, or holidays, or in the evening, we want our schools to be ready to be able to support the children upon entry. So, we put that in place.
Thank you. Yeah, the bus routes getting published early was really cool, and surprising, sorry, I didn't think it would happen, but, the, the, can you help us a little bit through the chair with the, how many were, when we're looking at these numbers, it's always kind of not really clear, how many of these people were called back, were recalls, in my world, we call it recalls? And how does that apply to these charts?
Madam Superintendent?
Through the chair. Thank you, Dr. Morris and Mr. Tony. So, we started going through the numbers again, because we anticipated that that would be the question, and we, of the last school year, the committee approved, or we let go, I guess it's not the committee who approves it, I'm the one who makes the recommendation, 163 teaching positions, which include school adjustment counselors, BCBA's, classroom teachers, 163. Of those 163, 162 of those people are working with us this school year.
Wow.
So, so the majority have, I mean, obviously, overwhelming majority have, have come back.
So they received a notice, but we were able to bring them back?
Yes. Now, keep in mind that the bucket I just described included BCBA's, school adjustment counselors, classroom teachers. Of those 162, I don't, we don't have the, I mean, I can get the numbers if, if the committee so chooses. The majority of them are classroom teachers that we brought back. That was our, that was, right, the classroom teacher. But yes.
Okay, so then when we look at, when we're looking at like, you know, diversification of, of new people, we're not talking, we're not double counting, right? Like, these are, which chart? I'm trying to, I thought there was one in here. On page 12. So these, the new hire, are the new hires, the 163 that we, that came back to us?
Dr. K.
So I'm sorry, I just want to make sure, through the chair, I'm answering your questions, can you ask that?
I want to make sure I ask it correctly, too. So I think I just heard that we let go, we gave notice to 160-something, and we brought back 160-something. And so, when we look at this chart that says new hires, this includes the 160 that were let go and brought back, is that correct?
So, through the chair, what you have here is, we have a category of brand-new hires that we hired, because when we have those vacancies, as they become vacant through resignations, retirements, we post them, and so we, we have worked very diligently to make sure that all of the folks that we had to non-renew had opportunities to interview first, had opportunities to, but all those positions that were vacant, we put out, and then we made sure they had a chance to interview, and then we hired them, and they became part of this. So we can get you very, much more concrete numbers categorically, if you would like. But to answer your question, we have a combination of brand-new folks that are coming into our system, as well as folks that are returning, that we've invited to interview again, and we've created systems for them to be able to be almost like the frontline folks to interview for any vacancies that we had as they arose.
Okay. I, I'd like to make a motion that we kind of get that deeper dive on those numbers, I'd appreciate that. And I think that's, that's all. Thank you. Thanks for the report.
Thank you. Okay, we're good. So file that, those in favor, opposed or ordered. I was, I was one of those students that had pizza on Friday. Never be a carrier?
Thank you. So I just want to make sure I have this correct, that you are stating, Superintendent, that the reason we don't have SLOs in our schools is because we don't have enough police officers in the city, it was to cover that position?
Madam Superintendent?
Through the chair, yes, that is what our acting chief of police shared with me.
So, at this particular time, instead of having an MOU, we're going to have an operating agreement, which is an item on the agenda this evening that we'll do, we'll discuss separately. But I just wanted to make sure that we were clear, that there won't be SLOs in our schools, we don't have officers that will be regular. We hope that the route officers will be available in regular, but we don't have a schedule, and we don't have specific names of officers that will be associated with our schools. Am I correct with that?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you. To get to the actual report here, and not the items separately, first of all, glad the vestibules were completed. They definitely were something that made these four schools, the entry, certainly modernized what we were looking at for their schools. When we look at the police and crosswalks, and crossing guards, is there an opportunity, I discussed this with the mayor earlier, and while we're talking about the first days and the first weeks of school, to complete, and I'll put it in a motion, that we complete a survey of how our schools are doing with the morning drop-off and the afternoon pickups. And, specific to issues that I have been informed of, I have gone to look at these particular schools. One in particular, Roosevelt, where construction is not being able to be completed until springtime. So, it was environmental issues that prohibited us from beginning that construction. Unfortunately, there are businesses on Grafton Street that are severely affected by the traffic that does back up on Grafton Street, to the point where there are four businesses that for three to four hours a day, do not have access to their own driveway. So this is repeated complaints, and I certainly can appreciate their complaints due to the fact that their customers are not, do not have access to get into their property. We have people that are on the side streets that are parking there, two and three lanes are taken up, along with the fact that unfortunately, we don't have ample parking there. Has it happened repeatedly over the years? Yes. Do we have an answer to it at some point, which will be the spring? But as of right now, what I would be interested in is how we can curtail some of what is occurring at Roosevelt School. And from the discussions I've had, not only with the parents that are there, but with the businesses in attending the neighborhood meetings, what they're asking for is it possible to have a police officer present to at least move the traffic along, or ticket the cars that are parking, blocking the driveway? These businesses are literally putting up cones. Those cones are being removed by the parents who are driving the vehicles, they are being pushed over, driven over, and they certainly can't continue at the pace that they are continuing at. The cross, crossing guard at that particular site, I would love to know if he has the steps on his phone when he's going back and forth, because he really can't keep up with it, there's so much of it. And it's certainly no fault of the staff, they're doing the best they can, or the bus situation, it's literally what it is. But if we at least could have some visibility of a police officer there to move it along, or if they are lining up, which they have been at 12:30 in the afternoon, and the school doesn't get out till 2:30, quarter to 3:00, so they're bringing their laptops and they're sitting in their vehicles, and they're working, as though they're working at home, in their car, as they're waiting for their child, but they're blocking a driveway. And, I have been taking snapshots of what has been occurring. What I haven't been doing is recording the conversations between parents when someone triple-packs and blocks the first car in, to the second car, to the third car. So, I would be prohibited from playing that, that video. But, we have to be responsible at some point, and the only solution that I have come up with, at this point, I'm certainly open to other ideas, is to have a police officer there to move the traffic along. there to move the traffic along and start to ticket some of these guys. And perhaps that will curtail the time they arrive and the situation as far as three lanes. The other piece, or the other suggestion would be to stagger the time that the students are getting out of school. So, there would be a difference of when the buses come to when the cars are there. And perhaps that would work. But it certainly cannot continue at the pace it's continuing because those businesses deserve, our students deserve an education, but those businesses also deserve to have their availability of their driveways and not be blocked off. So, that's what I'm asking at this time, to have a motion that we take a look at that and come up with a resolution over the next few months, a resolution quicker, so we are able to at least tell the businesses that they'll be able to be open Monday through Friday. Because at this point, they're not able to do it for an hour in the morning, and then they're not able to work two hours in the afternoon, and certainly taking a bite out of what they're doing. So, that was one issue. The other issue I have is with the student enrollment. You and I had discussed a couple of our schools that have excess of students. So, we have shortage of desk and chairs in supply for kindergarten classes that have more students than we had said 21, 22, 23, but some of them are up to 33, 34. And I realize that you're checking to count on that, and I certainly can appreciate that we do have to make sure that there is a Wombody in that spot. But presently, from what I'm being told, we do have a Wombody in those spots. So, the shortage of desks and chairs really concerns me because what we're doing now is having groups sit on the play rug that they would normally use, and students are at a desk and a chair, and then they're switching off. And it's not in the schedule of what they would consider playtime, it's more because they do not have the appropriate chair and desk. So, if you could look into that portion of it, I would appreciate that. Certainly would eliminate some of the issue, not only having the larger class, but not having the proper desk and chair, even though they are probably littler than the chair and the desk, they certainly need that. And the other piece was, we talked about our bus schedule, and I did, on a number of days over the last couple of weeks, drive around different schools. And I can tell you that our yellow school buses are out and about, all over the roads. And I certainly can appreciate one of the items that's on the agenda tonight to talk about safety. And one of the things I did want to bring up tonight in tonight's meeting is to reiterate the fact that when a bus has the sign that says "stop," it means "stop." It doesn't mean "coast," it doesn't mean maybe I can beat it before the full sign is out. It means "stop your vehicle." So, I hope people can truly look at this as though this is not only part of safety, but it's part of reality because we don't know if that student is going on the sidewalk or going across the street. And the problem I've seen is they're trying to beat out the stop sign on the bus. So, what I'm asking the public is, when you're out in the morning, and you're out in the afternoon, and you see our buses going down the road, and they're stopping, letting students off, yes, it's a couple of minutes, and at times, it is an inconvenience. However, it means "stop" because someone is going to be crossing that street at some point in time. And it's a very, it varies throughout the city on where the issues were. So, I would just say that publicly, that's a piece that we should perhaps look at at some point on how we can get parents who may not be looking at their child on that school bus at that particular time, but need to realize that those kids getting off the bus. And that's the part that I look at. I realize it's fully staffed, but it certainly is something that happens throughout the city. It's not one particular area that we look at. When we look at systems improvement, we talked about systems, structures, organization. I'm hoping that we can look at a couple of our schools just for beautification, even though the fall is coming and so on, and winter will be here before we know it, unfortunately, as far as I'm concerned. But if we can do a few things at some of our schools outside to make them look a little more attractive and a little more welcoming, I think that'll also help us along. As far as resignations and retirements, I do have a question in reference to human resources, and I just want to make sure that I was clear on what was stated earlier this evening, and that is, the people that did receive slips at the, in May and June due to our budget, they did have opportunities to reapply. Is that correct on what was stated tonight?
Through the chair, yes. We put them at, like, the top of an interview pool, right? So, we made personal phone calls to them. Some people actually chose not to, but they did have the opportunity.
It's their option, but they did have that opportunity.
Yes.
Okay. So, that takes care of the staffing portion of it. And then we have acquire and retain the talent. We have a variety of different projects that will be worked on this year, whether it be the art, the dance, and so on, and they all deserve our support. And I just hope that when we look at Burnco as being the school that we will be working on next, that we make a determination that what is there presently for the dance, the art, the music, and so on, that we take into consideration how we can build off of that and not only keep the students that we have there and retain them in our schools for a particular reason, but also to build it so it's a larger group of students that would have the ability to then attend. Because I firmly believe that we have had the opportunity in many of our comprehensive high schools to offer opportunities to our students with hands-on experiences, and we need to continue that. So, Burnco has been limited for a number of years in that reference, and I look forward to seeing what we will do in the coming year to make this more enticing for our students and also an additional option with that. So, thank you.
Member Johnson, or Vice Chair Johnson, if I could just respond, it's almost like, Member Biancaria, if you were in our room today, because we were literally talking about Burnco High School and what, we've already been in conversation with the school, and how can we have some, how do we maintain and grow the fine arts, performing arts component of it, and then start to align some of potential Chapter 74 programming to further support that? So, I don't know if you were a fly on the wall, but we are already talking about that and look forward to growing that throughout our, that's our final place, right? But what do we know that we have at Tech that we need more of? Our administrative director, Mr. Christonas, is on top of all of this. And then what do we want to further develop? And how do we help predict into the future what our youth might need, you know, down the road? So, yes, all of that is going on, and we will be bringing little snapshots of it to the committee along the way.
Sounds excellent. Thank you.
Member Benanda?
Thank you for the report. I just have a couple of questions. Probably this one is for Dr. Q. I was surprised that we had 80 educators resign and 30 pares. So, my question is, do we do any exit interviews with any of these, so we have an idea as to why so many people resigned?
Dr. Q.
Through the chair. That's a really great question. And actually, last year, we started by making sure we had an exit slip for anyone. So, as soon as someone sends the resignation, when we send the "thank you so much for your service," there is a link to a form. And in the form, it asks them at the end of that, "would you like to have a personal one-on-one conversation?" But in the form itself, there is a variety of questions that ask that exactly, what is the reason, but also questions like, "would you come back to the West Public Schools? Would you recommend us to other folks?" So, we are collecting all of that data, so we know exactly why people are leaving, and so we can hopefully stop them. The other thing I want to remind everyone here is that because of budget, because we did with the union incentivize folks retiring, and so we did do some of that work that we talked about here. So, we did see a little bit more retirements as a result of that. So, those are some of the things, but absolutely.
Great. Thank you. And then my other question is in the next page, and this might not be your question, but let's give it a try. Knowing how many staff that we had to let go because of the budget deficit, I'm trying to figure out how in '23, '24, elementary was 98.23, and now elementary is 98.73, when we had pretty severe cuts. So, and we didn't hire everybody back. So, I'm just trying to figure out where the numbers come from. The same thing from secondary, it was 93.65, and now, even though we had those cuts and we did not bring everybody back, it's now showing 97.50. So, I am trying to figure out how those numbers came to be.
Dr. Q.
Through the chair, when we looked at those numbers, we had more staff that did not have positions to be able to bring back, and I think that was great. I think just streamlining it, we really worked hard on making sure our vacancies are posted immediately, making sure we got folks into interview. As Dr. Monares mentioned, we made personal phone calls to people that we had actually let go or non-renewed, that principles that this person's really good, you know? And so, we did a lot of on-the-ground work, making sure those positions were filled.
So, I think going on, Member Mailman's question, so those positions were already counted in the year before because they worked for us. Now, are they recounted again because you called them back?
Through the chair, we have a finite number of positions that were budgeted. And so, I think I mentioned before here that it's really difficult because it's moving constantly, and if you look at the numbers, they shift daily because we're resignations coming in, we're posting out vacancies, we're interviewing. So, it's really hard to answer that question. But when we look at the report to bring back here, we can certainly look discreetly what each of those categories are, so we can drill down even further.
And update that. Great. And then my last question has to do with the number of BIPOC people. And I found it interesting that the majority of the hires were not in the teacher field. The majority of the hires were actually drivers and monitors and cafeteria workers. And I know, you know what, we're, that's great, I'm glad that they're hired there, too. But I know that the push really has been for us to have more teachers and pares and professionals in the school that look more like the students. So, and I know it's difficult when you look at the colleges, they don't seem to have a lot of BIPOC students enrolled in the education field, and it's a struggle for all districts. I was just wondering, do you have any ideas on what we're going to do to try to get that number to be as strong in the teacher field?
Through the chair, I think, thank you so much for asking that question, and my team and I have been really focusing on that. We see the same thing. But what we are excited about is that we're hiring people. Now, it's up to us to retain them and build pathways for them. We have folks who are currently teaching who started as a cafeteria employee, folks who are now teaching in administrative roles who started as a pares. So, it's really important for us and my team to really say, "let's get people in, and let's build pathways for them." And that is what we're working on right now.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you. So, Dr. Q, just going back to, to the question regarding the percentage increase, and it was higher than 2024, 24, 23, 24, and 20, and the staffing versus 24, 25. That's because it's on budgeted positions. So, it's less positions in the, is that, so the percentage could go up as long as we're hiring at a quick rate? Yeah. So, when you compare in two years, this year, the current year, has a lot less positions in the budget than what we had in the previous year.
That is correct. And so, we were able to fill them quickly because we had fewer positions and more candidates applying.
So, the number would go up as long as you move quickly to hire those spots. Okay. Thank you. Okay. With that, we'll take collectively, we'll take, we will file this, take Member Benanda, Member Biancaria's motion to collectively, who is in favor, opposed or ordered. Okay, we have N approval of the grants and other finance items. We'll take that on a roll call if everybody's all set. Roll call.
Member Alvarez?
Yes.
Member Biancaria?
Yes.
Member Benanda?
Yes.
Member Guardiola?
Yes.
Vice Chair Johnson?
Yes.
Member Mailman?
Yes.
Member McCullough?
Yes.
Member Roy?
Yes.
Mayor Petty?
Yes. General Business, we're on the O. The city renaming St. Casmian to Dr. Michael O'Neill program at the alternative school. I would recommend at this time was refer to the administration. Any questions? Madam Superintendent?
Through the chair. So, I am well aware that there was an ask from Member Benanda to have something back to the committee on this item at the end of last school year, and working with the school, they, they were not ready. They honestly said, "Dr. Monares, we're focused on getting our children graduated, keeping them safe right now. This is not at the top of our priority." And so, I didn't bring something back because I didn't have anything to bring back. I went to speak with the coordinator of the school last Friday, and we talked about it further and talked through it. And so, I just received a proposal that I'll bring back in a formal format to this committee for the next committee meeting. But what they are recommending is, they have really redone their, and we heard them a couple of months ago, right? They redid their, their approach to educating their children and bringing in more arts programs. So, they've got a full-time art teacher. There's another teacher there that is, has redone a classroom, and they've got a sound studio in there, and helping the kids really work through creative expression. And so, what they would like to do is take that hallway, or a hallway, because this is a temporary facility for the school right now, we know that. But they want to take a hallway where these two classrooms are, and they would like to name it the Dr. Mike O'Neill Artupreneur Avenue, which I thought was extremely creative. And then that would show, it would capture what, remember Clancy asked when she brought this forward, which was to find a way to really kind of honor Dr. O'Neill's commitment to the program for so many decades, and align that with where the school is going. So, I will be bringing this back to the committee because, again, I just received it today. And then from there, I'm not sure what the recommendation would be, if it goes to FOG or if the committee votes on it right then and there, but we'll work on that in the background. So, it is coming. Just got it today. Apologize, the school was not ready at the end of last school year, and I wanted them to focus on what they needed to do to get their, their children ready for graduation. Thank you.
Great. So, we're further out to the administration for a report back to the next meeting, probably, the next meeting. Who is in favor, opposed or ordered? Next, we have 4.23, prior report including 10 years of data on the amount of funding per school for credit buyback. Additional motion to provide a report on how many students walk the stage at the graduation without achieving 24 credits for this year. And any questions on that? Member Benanda?
Yes, except the part of the report on the number of students, but the cost of funding per school was not included in the report.
Per school year for credit buyback.
So, if we could just get the, at the next meeting or the meeting after, the cost of funding, that would be great.
Madam Superintendent?
Through the chair, this was included in, the funding cost was part of the summer school program. So, there wasn't additional funding for this. And we did provide the summer school information previously.
So, through the chair, in the past, at least over the last 10 years, I think 10 years was Member Mailman's request, there was funding provided for high schools, for Saturday programs. for Saturday programs and after-school programs for buyback. So I know there was funding that was provided. I don't know if there was funding last year or the year before.
Mr. Allen.
Through the chair, I was trying to find the item. I believe the funding was already provided in a different report to the school committee because both Mr. Foley and I spoke to the item at this table. So I can try to find the item for, and just resend it to the committee members just for information.
Okay, can you resend that to everyone? If anybody has questions, we can.
Thank you.
Try to get on something for the next agenda. Man, Biancaria.
Thank you. And when we originally spoke of this item in graduation and walking across the stage, we asked if there was a number of, that we could work with. And we were told like there were three or four students. So I was a little surprised when I looked at this. And I was obviously concerned with the fact that North High is at 14. South is at four. Worcester Tech is at one. Doherty is zero. Burnco at zero. So my concern would be, we have one school at 14. Does anyone have a response on, throw this out to administration, on why that would be so high compared to the other schools?
Ma'am Superintendent.
Through the chair, so it would be, each year it would be for a different reason. So I wouldn't want to say it's all the same reason every year. And as we saw, North had 14. It could be North, right now at least, has a higher number of children who are newer to the community, who English is not their first language. There could be a variety of reasons as to why North had those students that needed a little bit of time. What I'm most pleased is that they had the opportunity to walk with their peers and earn that diploma. What we don't know in this number is how many of those students maybe would have dropped out? And we would have just lost those numbers altogether. But because they were given the opportunity to celebrate their accomplishments, they followed through with what they need to do. So although I see 14 and I hear what you're saying, the outcome is what we wanted, which was more children with, more young adults with diplomas.
I have no problem with those comments. But the issue I have is, how do we, as a system, moving forward, ensure that we're not at 14 next year? That we're at two, we're at three, we're at one, we're at zero? So what are we doing with our system to ensure that North High would not be at 14 and everyone else be under five? So I have an issue with that due to the fact that North High has many opportunities. It's a great school. That staff works very, very hard. We have not only accomplished a great deal with promoting our sports and promoting all of the hands-on courses that we offer. However, we have 14 students that slipped through. So I don't want to see that in the future. What do we need to do? What is going to happen to eliminate that? And I certainly understand that we could always have two, three, four. But 14 is a high number when you look at the rest. So what's in the future for this?
Mr. Christodanis, would you like to come and share the work that's going on with our guidance counselors and the tracking of students?
Through the chair, especially in speaking to North and to your question in regards to the follow-through, with our guidance counselors, we've put a lot of things in place through the credit evaluations and with our department heads in the guidance department, where they're working with a lesser load to help support their staff to make sure that we're doing the checks with our students throughout the years. We put a little better system in place over the last couple of years to make sure that our students are meeting the requirements they have and crossing off those graduation requirements and reaching those credits over the years towards the end. We do run into some situations, I know in particular, which may or may not be those numbers because I don't know what those individuals are. You do run into some situations lately that have come up for us with the vocational programs, where students do not pass those in their senior year or junior year. And they're not able to graduate because they haven't finished those credits with those vocational programs as well. We know we had two students in particular at North High that that happened too late. And then when they come out of that, not able to receive their certificate, they had to make up those classes or they also have to meet their language requirement when they come out, because if they're in a Chapter 74 program, they don't have to take the foreign language. So there are some different little pieces that we've had to make sure along the way. We're also in conversation with some programming. And this goes to some of the makeup that we have with our Play-Doh, which is our makeup program, which Ed Mentum has purchased, the Play-Doh program, which is the online. And they have this big overarching, we actually have, our guidance counselors will be meeting on Monday with representatives from that to hopefully give us better insight. They've actually added some Chapter 74 classes, as well as college and career readiness classes that students can take for makeup now, as opposed to just losing those credits and having to come out of those programs.
Thank you. Is there an opportunity in the future to review the number of students that each counselor is overseeing?
Through the chair, yes. We have to do that every year. We look at who has, what number of students recommended by the Masca Model. There is 250 students per council that we have. You know, we'd look at, obviously, as our numbers increase through the high schools, especially with the population growth and the addition in the freshman classes that are quite big at South and Doherty these years, is the possibility that we probably need to add more counselors with those loads within each school and with the purview of the principal. And their designee is the department head to work with them to see what their caseload would be. Some of them might handle just the engineering students at Doherty they previously used to do, but now they have additional programs. Sometimes the department head will take the specialty programs and then other counselors will fill in with the numbers they have. Currently, we have less than 300 with each counselor at the end of last year's school date. And then we'll have those numbers official in the next couple of weeks, how many each counselor has.
Thank you. I do ask that the school committee receives that data. And that would be the number of students that is, each counselor in each school will have assigned to them. And also, I would ask administration, are we looking for any counselors or are all of those positions filled at this time?
Ma'am Superintendent.
Through the chair, we are filled.
We are filled. So we have the maximum that we would be allowed to.
That has been budgeted, correct.
So we are looking, you gave a number of 250. Am I correct with that?
Correct.
Okay, so 250 students per counselor. So depending on, obviously, the enrollment in the schools by the number of, what is the highest that we are looking at? Do we know? Per counselor, per student?
Well, it's 250. It's 250.
250 is the number. And it gets to, it's the average number. So what we look at is, you know, with the increasing population at South, the addition of a counselor there, which helps lessen that load for everybody. And then the counselor at South has a larger load than maybe some of the other counselors, particularly North or Burnco.
Okay. That's my concern is that if we have a max of 250, but at times they have 275, they may have 300. That's a lot of students to keep track of. And that's where we get into the issue of who needs some additional help, who needs additional support? And then we get through the number 14. So I'd like to see that looked at over the year and not just a snapshot real now. And then in January, perhaps we need to look at it again to ensure that we are in the same position. So we're moving our kids in the right direction. So we're not sitting on them.
Through the chair, for clarity, I want to make sure, Member Biancaria, you're speaking specifically to our guidance counselors because we have guidance and we have school adjustment counselors. You're talking about guidance counselors who monitor the credits of our students?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. Because that would be what this is a reflection of at this particular time.
I just didn't want us to.
Right. No, no. This is to do with the credits that the students are required to have to walk across the stage. We made some adjustments. We tweaked that so we could have students walk across the stage with their friends and so on. However, my concern is that we have 14 at North and everybody else is under five.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Member Benanda.
So it sounds to me like that role of director of guidance that was cut is really needed to be something that needs to be looked at again. Is my understanding that you're taking on that position too now?
Yes, the position of guidance, director of guidance was in our department. And so I'm overseeing that position currently.
So is there plans to reinstate that position?
Through the chair, not for this school year, there is not.
So for future school years, there might be?
We will monitor. We, as you know, Member Benanda, that position did not exist before. So we created it last school year with the budget cuts, with the request to make cuts at the top to start with. That was one of the last that came in. It needed, it was one that we had not had for many years. So we put it in place and we may or may not need it in the future.
So I think it was a position that was needed in the future. I mean, in the past, and the funding was not available. The acting superintendent before me had requested that position. But because of funding that position, there was no money for it. But there definitely is a need for that position, especially overseeing credits. Especially in some of our non-high school programs that need to have people oversee credits. I think it's an important position. With everything you have to do, it certainly is a great added task for you. Not that, I don't think you can do it. Just that, I think it's something that we need to keep our eyes on. Because credits and being able to graduate with the right credits is a really important job that all guidance counselors have to do. And, you know, you'd have to oversee that too now. Thank you.
Thank you. Member Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. To the superintendent or to Mr. Cosonis, this is the students that were two credits short of graduating. And they were able to walk with their peers in graduation and then just make up two credits. Or maybe they were one credit short, right? Make up that credit in summer school. So we're not really talking about students who failed numerous classes and were eight credits short and four classes short. We're talking about students who may have been one credit short. So theoretically, the guidance counselor and the student basically did their job, but just came up a little bit short, maybe due to gym or spit, whatever it may be in regards to graduating, well, receiving their diploma instead of, you know, on that day, instead of just having to go to summer school to make that up. Correct?
That is correct.
Thank you.
Thank you. So I'd like to say, good job. I still enjoyed reading that report. I think we're once doing short, if I remember right. And but I think it was the right decision that the kids, the scholars, walked the stage and get to the, with their fellow students and work hard over the summer to receive the credits that they needed to get done. So appreciate the report. So the motion is to take it collectively. We have a motion from the member Biancaria. Also, Mr. Allen will provide the financial report when he finds that and sends it to us, school committee members, and we'll file the item. Roll call.
Member Alvarez.
Second one.
Through the chair, for the caseload on the guidance counselors, is that something that is to come back to the committee or is that something to go into the what's happening?
Have we requested the what's happening? Get that report on the Friday later?
Yes.
Whatever works for the superintendent, as long as we receive the information. So we have it. And then we can look at it further. That's fine.
So we can provide it, not tomorrow, the following Friday should be fine.
That's fine. As we have the numbers and we could take a look at it and see how we're looking at it for the future down the road. Thank you.
Okay, roll call.
Member Alvarez.
Yes.
Member Biancaria.
Yes.
Member Benanda.
Yes.
Member Guardiola.
Yes.
Vice Chair Johnson.
Yes.
Member Mailman.
Yes.
Member McCullough.
Yes.
Member Roy.
Yes.
Mayor Petty.
Yes, request administration to provide a report to the school committee on the status of the SLO school program. Oh, you get two items, I'm sorry. Request that the administration provide to the school committee all MOU signed by the superintendent and the president, chief of police. You answered most of your questions earlier or?
I do have some questions in reference to this because I felt as though the item itself deserved its own time here. It is nine pages of a operations agreement. And we used to have a MOU. So I would say that it's a little different, but it does have some similar pieces to it. But I did have some questions in reference to it. Thank you for, first of all, getting this in a timely fashion. I certainly appreciate that. I know we discussed it a few times, Superintendent. So I certainly appreciate that. We anticipated that we would receive this at the end of September and we have it now. So that works. When I see some of the statements here, I do have some concerns. One of them is, it is anticipated the WPD office to stop on a regular basis to schools within the route sector to connect with administrative staff, students, so as to maintain relationships. And when you mentioned earlier in the evening how one of the pieces of this was going to be with sixth grade health classes, you were very specific in that they were not going to be in their uniform. So I ask if when they are stopping on a regular basis to schools within their route to connect with administrative staff and students, are they going to be allowed to wear the uniform? I have, let me just preface by saying, I have no problem with them wearing the uniform. So let me make that statement prior to. But I'm asking that because it seemed one of the pieces that you were specific in, that they would not be in uniform.
Ma'am Superintendent.
Through the chair, so when they're stopping by in just the regular, I don't, I say route, route officer, of course, they're going to be in uniform because that's what they're in all day.
Right.
The reason that I specified the, for the sixth grade scholarly engagement is there are some families that are very uncomfortable with the police officers teaching in the uniform, right? So it's different. So if they're just stopping in, of course, they would be.
Okay. On page three, we have down, request the added police patrols or presence on school campus should be first directed to the WPD, who will arrange for adequate police deployment. And they may assist with traffic concerns at their assigned schools. So they really don't have assigned schools? So how would that work if they don't have assigned schools?
Ma'am Superintendent.
Through the chair, so the way that the chief would determine who is going to be there would be based off of the route. And then, I don't know, maybe they would have to bring in extra duty. That is put in there by the chief of police. So if we request it, then they will figure out how to do it. We would still have to figure out cost on that. So even when we bring back the recommendation for the motion that you filed earlier, we're going to put in there what the potential cost would be because this committee needs to determine if that's where the money should go.
Anytime that we are looking at anything, we certainly have to look at what the funding is going to be and what the cost is going to be. But we also have to be responsible for what we're looking at. So I certainly appreciate your statements. Under roles and responsibility of Worcester Public Schools, there seems to be a tremendous amount that is left to the principals. Has there been training that has taken place for our principals to coordinate these assignments, if and when they have to work with the police? Have we done the training already?
Ma'am Superintendent.
So the communication runs through Mr. Tony and Dr. Morris with the school principals in collaboration with the executive directors. We have a memo that's gone out that outlines the changes in this operating agreement. If it hasn't gone out today, it's going out. Did it already go out? Tomorrow, we wanted to wait until this was done at the committee level. And so the training is really around. And, and so the training is really around, how do you, what's the restorative practices that need to take place at the school? Because the discipline of children is, it falls on the school district, it's not the police officer. The work, the interaction with law enforcement is what we started with, I love you guys and that kind of training. And it's also the interaction with having the right point people and what that looks like. So there's not so much training, Member Benanda, in how to communicate back and forth. It is aligning people so that people know whom. And yes, we've done that and we've been doing that and we're going to keep getting better at it, especially since last year we had the SLO. This year, we do not.
Okay. So there, there has not been much training as far as what the principals have to do? Because as you read this, it's the principals shall use their reasoned professional judgment and discretion to determine the WPD involvement inappropriate for addressing student conduct and, and so on in such instances. So I'm just wondering if we're, we have our principals up to date on what they're responsible for, how they would be handling it. And they have an abundance of policies and procedures that they look at. So are we providing any additional training in review of these, these, these nine pages?
Yes.
Because it does designate what they would be doing versus what the police would be doing. And I clearly, it's not just discipline, it's certainly different school safety pieces that are in here.
Through the chair, not only our principals are being trained, but at our secondary, we have also started a secondary assistant principal academy where they're meeting monthly. Mr. Tony is instrumental in that and guiding them through all the different responsibilities as it pertains to engaging with any kind of disciplinary or work that needs to take place. So yes, those things are in place. These are not, it's not new to our principals. The principals have been doing this. This is just outlining it because, because we don't have an MOU anymore. But it's not a new practice.
But it is a new practice as far as having the SLO in the school. So if we don't have it and they are responsible, their point of contact, their information gathering, what they are acknowledging, what the proper interrogation it would be, what they're working on and how they're disclosing what is actually occurring is, varies from the situ, in different situations. So they might have handled something, but we also have some new principles.
Right.
So we want to make sure that they are up to date in, with us.
And we keep, correct. And we keep improving upon our, our due process and investigative processes, training people to make sure that, that our principals and our assistant principals know how to do the appropriate investigation, how to conduct them, and then what to do disciplinary as, as appropriate. So that's an ongoing, that's ongoing work.
Thank you. Also, it mentions if the district has access to student rights training through a community partner or the district attorney's office, the school shall consider offering such a training to students. Are we doing that or are we looking into that? Or is that, it's on page four of nine at the top, third paragraph. It reads that, and I'm just curious on the, the way it's worded, if the district has access. So is it something we would look to the future for or is it something we're working on now?
Madam Superintendent.
Through the chair, so this language is if we feel that there's a need collectively between Worcester Police Department and Worcester School, Public Schools. We already manage this. We take care of the, the access to student rights. FERPA is, is the way that we manage things. So this is already in place. Again, this is just to codify. That's not something we need to do new.
So we're not going to have a connection with the DA's office?
We already do it.
We already do.
We already do it.
So we have that connection. So that's being taken care of. The other piece of this, as you mentioned, the sixth grade health class, I know that we did that in the past. So it's more or less bringing in ideas and programs on groups versus joining a gang versus being in a positive group, such as the Boys and Girls Club, Girls Inc., and so on. So we are going back to that with the sixth grade health class, is that correct?
Madam Superintendent.
Through the chair, it will be offered during our health time for twice, two times by the Worcester Police Department. So twice, they will come in and it will be during the health period.
And that will be available to all sixth grade?
Well, we're working with them to make sure that they, we're not sure if they have the bandwidth. I don't know if they know they do, but we're going to make that the priority or an effort.
Okay. Thank you. And, let's see. Yeah, page six of nine, at the bottom of this, it reads full access to the school or school sites video system for purpose of police response in criminal investigation. And that's fine during school time? Are we in place and do we have a procedure for unfortunate circumstances, and we all know that they occur, obviously after school hours, on the weekends, on holidays? So what, what are we doing to ensure that there is a solid communication about how to handle a situation and what we need to do to handle that situation when the threats and so on occur after school during the night and so on?
Madam Superintendent.
Through the chair, so as I shared before, we, the chief and I have agreed that he would let me know when things happen at those times and I would inform my team so that they can work with the schools. We are reliant on the, the police department to let us know. Sometimes they're busy doing the work and we find out much later. And, and that is what life is about, unfortunately. But we have agreed that he and I would be the point person. I would then reach out to Mr. Tony and Dr. Morris. These two men are available all the time, way beyond their, their work hours. And they then start to work with the executive directors who also are available and the schools that are potentially impacted.
So there is some organizational structure there that will?
On Worcester Public School side?
Help us with that?
On the Worcester Public School side, yes. We are, again, reliant on the Worcester Police Department to get us that information. We don't always get it as quickly as we would like, but I also understand that they're dealing with a lot of challenging situations. So as soon as we get it, we start to execute our side.
Taking into consideration, I understand what you're saying, but also into consideration that at times, we have the information in reference to a student, a boyfriend, a girlfriend, or whatever the circumstances may be, and we are giving it to the police department.
Yes, we do on our end.
So we have that operative, operational structure in place so our students feel as though they have something, somewhere to go to report when there is an issue.
I'm not sure I understand your question, but what I will say is that when we have information, we, and that, that goes directly from Dr. Morris or Mr. Tony, tends to come from Mr. Tony a lot to the police department to let them know so that we can keep our children safe, because that's our ultimate goal.
Our ultimate goal would be that, and that's why I'm asking the questions. So I certainly appreciate this because it is a little different than what we had before. The data collection piece is the final and it's on page seven. And we talk about, in accordance with the section of the chapter and the general laws and so on. And do we feel as though at this particular time, I know we had some questions on one of the reports that we received over the summer in reference to weapons and so on, are we up to date on what we need to do and how we need to do it and what we need to report as far as that's concerned? Because this is part of what we would be doing with this agreement.
Through the chair, yes, we're up to date. What we believe happens, and the mayor mentioned this previously, that it's happened in the past, when Desi pulls the data from our information system, they pull from certain categories. In speaking with the, my executive directors, they said that especially when it comes to weapons, we believe that our, our schools are coding it as, I don't want to use the wrong term, but there's another category in our information system that would say a student has a weapon. And that's where they're coding it. And Desi's pulling from a different part, so therefore it shows a zero. Because to the, what was said earlier or a couple of committee meetings ago, of course, we've had some issues with weapons on campus and we deal with this situation and we, we put safety plans in place and/or we do long-term suspension depending on the situation. So does Desi get the information? Yes. We give it to them through our information system. That's part of our system's improvement to make sure that the data sets that we're giving them is accurate. And some of the work also is training our, our administrators, both our principals and mostly our system principals, because they're the ones who put the, they tend to record things, put, training them on which category to use when we're putting this in the system so that that category is then what gets pulled.
Sure.
And shared. So a work in progress. And, but we do believe that that is why the data looks different from what we know is the reality.
Okay. And we're all very familiar with 911 for immediate police response. And I know it's listed here on page eight, but the phone number 799-8606 is not always a familiar number. Is there a way that we can have that available and visible, whether it be in the main office of a school, at the principal's desk, the assistant principal's desk? That is not a number that everyone uses every day. So I would like to see if we can somehow have that number available. So when you're under the circumstances and you have something that you have to work with and you would like to discuss it with the Worcester Police Department as an administrator at a particular school, you're not starting off with, where is that number? So I'm hoping that we can come up with something that has that number listed for availability for any, any, any administrator that would need it at that time. Because again, it's not a number that many people use all the time. So my suggestion would be that it be visible. And obviously, everyone unfortunately would be, recognize the 911 number, but that's not the number you want to be calling all the time. You want to be using the other number for the police. If that was possible for the schools to have that, so they're not scouring around looking for the number.
Okay.
Well, I thank you for this. Again, we had discussed it. I, I am disappointed we don't have the SLOs. Perhaps as we look to the future, we can put this back on the discussion plate at some point in time when we have recruitment and so on with our police department and discussion on how we would move forward. This is probably 27, 28 years that we've not had assigned police offices to our schools. So I strongly feel as though that partnership is part of what we do and how we have continued to keep our schools safe. This operating agreement certainly does cover a great deal. And it is different than what we had before. Similar, but it is different. So I think that we have many challenges throughout our school year, whether it be under the umbrella of education, safety accountability and so on. However, as we go forward and we look at how our city is, what we have for recruitment and so on, I certainly would be interested in having, even if we had two SLOs that were assigned and we had assurance that they would be available to us. I think that that would certainly help us along the way. But we'll see how this works out and thank you very much for your time on this.
Thank you. Member Benanda.
I was just wondering about the picking of grade six for the special program. Looking at what's been going around in the community and the students that have been involved in some crime in the community. I'm just wondering, grade six, then they move on to different middle schools. And so I'm just wondering for consistency and for continued relationship with the police officer, why we wouldn't have picked grade nine where our kids have to take health for a semester and it could be a little more consistent, not just two classes?
Madam Superintendent.
Through the chair, so that this is more of a prevention to get them before they enter into adolescence at the middle and high school.
Okay. Thank you. So the motion is to file both items. Those in favor, postal audit. Next item is 4.70, to provide a report that shows the total number of teachers, administrators and support personnel who have resigned their positions at Worcester Public Schools from May 2024 to the present. Anybody on that? I know we've gone over this, but. With that, we can, all set, we can file. Those in favor, postal audit. To gather ideas from administration in order to better schedule recognitions, for example, could we schedule three or four specific dates per school year where they handle academic, athletic, other recognition versus the current process of as things come up? Member Mailman?
Thank you. And through the chair, I guess to my colleagues, before I was on this committee, I know that this is an item that's been discussed at many school committees in years gone by and probably across different towns and cities. And when I watched it prior to being, you know, being a member of the body, but, and obviously, when the kids come in, we love it. We love the kids, we love their coaches, we love their teachers. This is a happy moment. And so I, I don't want to be a downer and I want to say that I love sports probably as much as Molly. So it is not anti-sport, it is not anti-whatever. It is, it is about the use of our time. And I, my thought was, and I, I guess what bothered me before I was on the committee and what I've heard from other people since I've been on the committee, members of the public, families, whatever, I don't know what our criteria is for who gets recognized. It is, I worry about who we don't recognize. You know, you go to the senior awards thing and there's so many cool, interesting things that have happened in this district. And, and sometimes we don't hear about those. So I just thought that maybe some good minds could come up with a way that might alleviate some of those concerns that I have about the way we do this. And even if it's, you know, I said three or four times a year, that would mean every two months. I mean, if we did it the second or the third month at that last meeting of the year, at least we'd all have our sights on, you know, thinking about those kind of recognitions for that time and, and not just, you know, if somebody picks up the phone or we read the paper or whatever else. So we file this, it's been filed many times, I'm not sure, over the years, a similar item. And that is one thing I'm learning, that everything is not new, everything is just a kind of a regurgitation. So I'd ask my colleagues to, for consideration of that. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Member McCullough.
Thank you. And through the chair, and with all respect to Member Mailman, I think she knows how I feel about this item from previous conversations. Additionally, to gather ideas from administration, this wouldn't be the purview administrate of administration. Recognizations are filed by school committee members to recognize achievements of students within the Worcester Public Schools. And while sometimes it may seem heavily on a sports note, we have had a lot of sports success lately. I know I've filed items over the years that are non-athletics related and we have the option of sending letters or doing in-person recognitions. And while I understand that sometimes it can seem disruptive to the meetings, to break them up into only so many meetings per year, you know, when you have something that may have happened in September and waiting till November, or it could be till the next time if the person isn't available on that date, kind of takes away a little bit, in my opinion, from that recognition for the action that happened. So, you know, it hasn't happened exactly, but typically it's supposed to be one meeting a month is when we try to do the recognitions. It doesn't always happen that way based on what people have for availability, what we're able to coordinate. So I would just ask that we continue to try to do that if possible. I know in June, we ran into several groups needing to come to the same meeting because it was the end of the year and they hadn't been able to get here before that. So that did create a longer timeframe of that. So my motion would be to file this item.
Okay. Member Biancaria?
Part of what we do as school committee members is walk around the community and see what's going on. Not only do we recognize what our students have accomplished, but how they've accomplished it and what the team effort is. So if we're not going to recognize that as things come up, I don't feel as though we should have them wait two or three months. Because what will happen is they're not able to make it, and if they're not able to make it, then it's six months down the road. And when you recognize someone six months after they've actually accomplished something, it doesn't have the same pizzazz. When we recognize someone, it means something. It means something to them, it means something to us. It's also part of who we are. So I ask this item be filed.
Okay. So the motion is to file, takes precedent of the item, roll call.
Member Alvarez?
No.
Member Biancaria?
Yes.
Member Benanda?
Yes.
Member Guardiola?
Yes.
Vice Chair Johnson?
Yes.
Member Mailman?
No.
Member McCullough?
Yes.
Member Roy?
Yes.
Mayor Petty?
Yes. Okay, our next item is to, first of all, I recognize the students from Holy Cross who are here tonight, and appreciate you being here. And I know you have a tough teacher up there, so God bless you. And I see Ms. Novick, who's the ethics teacher at Holy Cross College. Congratulations on that position. So, okay. So next item up is authorize administration to enter into lease agreements for up to five years, the replacement of 6,000 Chromebooks, 1,000 MacBooks, 1,000 iPads in accordance with the district's technology replacement schedule. Motion is to approve, roll call.
Member Alvarez?
Yes.
Member Biancaria?
Yes.
Member Benanda?
Yes.
Member Guardiola?
Yes.
Vice Chair Johnson?
Yes.
Member Mailman?
Yes.
Member McCullough?
Yes.
Member Roy?
Yes.
And to request that administration have Worcester Public Schools provide vehicle and pedestrian safety education to students K through 12. Recommendations refer to T L S and S. No, go ahead. Member Roy?
First of all, I emphatically want to state that never ever should a pedestrian who suffers severe injury or death at the hands of a speeding or distracted driver should ever be held at fault. And that's not the intent of this item. The agenda item came about after I received calls during the summer and right after school started, based pretty much on the sad things that happened this past summer. The death of one student and another who, thank God, just came out of a coma, and let's hope she has a full recovery and can resume to her classes soon, among other incidents at the hands of drivers is very concerning. I agree with the parents I spoke with that it would be in the best interest of our students in grades K through 12 to attend a class or an assembly on vehicular and pedestrian safety, including using crosswalks, the importance of crosslights, looking both ways, and never ever to be distracted and walk out between cars or parked cars, just to be cognizant. The item is simply to educate our children on how to have a good defense when they are walking, biking, and crossing the street, to educate them on just how dangerous cars can be. And to always be around, aware of their surroundings, to make sure they do everything in their power to stay safe and to watch out for themselves. Let's face it, yesterday at traffic and parking, the 25 mile per hour was passed and 20 miles per hour in certain areas. This will go to a vote next Tuesday, correct?
Correct.
But the problem is, we can't guarantee that the drivers will adhere to this. And we don't have, police can't be everywhere to enforce it. I'm gravely concerned. I took, I took the Hank Stoltz challenge, and I did the 25 miles per hour, and I've been trying it because I anticipated this would pass. I've received some colorful hand gestures. I've been beeped at, and the worst-case scenario was I was passed on and on passingly a road. I'm very, I'm very concerned. And I think this passing of the 25 miles per hour is a great step forward towards vision zero. I just want to make sure our kids are aware of how dangerous these cars can be and to pay attention. On another note, in closing, I do want to say after member Biancaria stated, and we've all seen it, we've seen the bus starts to stop, it'd stop, the sign's not completely out, and cars fly. They fly by. Is there a camera or any way we can ticket on the bus to ticket these people who break that law? A kid's going to get hit eventually.
I know.
And we don't know if they're going off the bus to a parent or home, or if they're crossing the street, and drivers just don't care. And I do agree with the woman who said that our crossing guards do a great job. They do. And they're very careful and they're very cognizant to keep our children safe. And the last thing, Mrs. St. Dennis left, I noticed, but I live in that area, and I'll tell you, Apricot Street is a mess. And we are going to see a child get seriously hurt. Not the child's fault, but the cars just don't care. And that's got to stop. And thank you for your time, and I hope my colleagues agree, this is an educational tool to keep our children safe. Thank you.
Thank you. So send that to TR, to the committee, correct? Yep. So send that to committee. Those in favor, opposed, so ordered. I know the police have been out there. I know they're in front of Forest Grove this week handing out tickets, and they've been out in the community for the last couple of weeks pretty strong. So I think that will grow over the education and enforcement, so. Okay, so we are on 4-84. To request a report on additional funding needed, if any, to provide safety measures, new or additional, in the Worcester Public Schools branches, library branches located in the Worcester Public Schools buildings. Member Benanda?
So I thought of this item after I read what happened at the Worcester Public Library, and knowing that we have Worcester Public Libraries in our schools. So I don't know if there's been extra safety measures that were implemented, or we need to look at some funding to provide some of that. So that's why I had the item listed.
Ma'am Superintendent?
Through the chair. We have an existing MOU with the Worcester Public Library, and we're in the process of revising it with them. And so we can include this in there. I don't, if there's a funding that the committee wouldn't need to provide, we would bring that back, and it'd have to go to FOG. But I recommend that we, you allow us to finish the MOU first, the refinement of that.
Sure. And have we had an issue in the libraries in the Worcester Public Schools?
Not as of now.
Okay. So send that to the administration. Those in favor, opposed, so ordered. Consider rescheduling November 7th, 2024, full school committee meeting to November 14th, 2024, to the MASC, Mass Joint Conference. And so we can change that date to the 14th. Is there a refine with that? Okay. So, okay, so we'll move that to 14th. Oh, maybe I'll go this year. Okay, so roll call.
Member Alvarez?
Just approved the change of the date of the November meeting.
Yes.
Member Biancaria?
Yes.
Member Benanda?
Yes.
Member Guardiola?
Yes.
Vice Chair Johnson?
Yes.
Member Mailman?
No.
Member McCullough?
Yes.
Member Roy?
Well, I have to say, it is my birthday.
You can't speak in roll. You can't speak. I'll get your birthday.
Yes. So I want a cake.
Mayor Petty?
Yes. So, okay. Thanks for the evening and great meeting tonight. So see you in a few weeks. Motion to adjourn. Those in favor, opposed, so ordered.